Good evening. We'll call the Burlington City Council, November 17th, 2015, meeting to order. I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome you here this evening. Also, I'd like to remind you to silence all electronic devices at this time. Call on Councilmember Bob Ward for tonight's invocation.
Please join me in a moment. Silence, please. Thank you.
Also, our prayers and thoughts are with David Huffman and his family. David lost his father last week, so our condolences to your family.
Thank you.
This time, the code of ethics to closing conflicts of interest. Recognize City Clerk Renee Ward. Ms. Ward.
Members of council, it's my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest and matters that are before us. At this time, I ask to hear any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda.
Not done.
Next time's approval of amendments, October 5th, 2015. Work session, October 20th, 2015, City Council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Adoption of the agenda.
We will adopt the agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Consent agenda. A, to approve the following Traffic Commission recommendations as spelled out in your agenda. B, to temporarily close the following streets on Saturday, November 21st, 2015, beginning at 7:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. for the 69th Annual Burlington Christmas Parade, as spelled out in your agenda. C, to temporarily close the following streets on Friday, December 11th, 2015, for the Holiday Magic, a Dickens Christmas downtown event from 2:00 until 11:00, as spelled out in your agenda. D, to approve the final plat for Huffamille Plaza Limited Partnership, a North Carolina Limited Partnership for property located on the north side of Garden Road between Boone Station Drive, Huffamille Road, as shown on plans by Jimmy Barber Surveying, dated May 28th, 2015, containing one lot. E, to reclassify the Director of Administrative Services, Level 38, position to Assistant City Manager, Level 42. F, Budget Amendment 2016-13 Burlington Downtown Corporation, as spelled out in your agenda. Budget Amendment 2016-14 Police Men Edward Bryan Justice Assistance Grant Project Ordinance, as spelled out in your agenda. H, Budget Amendment 2016-15 Police Melon L. Hall Fund Donation, as spelled out in your agenda.
Move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose. Thank you. Public hearings. One, a public hearing is scheduled to consider an application to rezone from I-1 Planned Industrial District to R-9 Residential District, the property located at 1319 Rayon Street, referenced as Alamance County Tax Identification Number is 139110. This time, we'd recognize Amy Nelson. Ms. Nelson, welcome.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor and Council. This property is currently zoned I-1 Planned Industrial District, which does not allow for single-family use. The house at this address burned down and the owner wants to rebuild with another home. Thus, the property needs to be rezoned. R-9 is found in the vicinity of the property, and I'll show you that. You can see the pale yellow here of R-9, and the area already has a nice mix of uses. And this rezoning request has the recommendation of staff. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend the request to council. The commission found the rezoning will not adversely affect the adjoining property, is in keeping with land uses already in the area, and that is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan.
Questions from Ms. Nelson.
This is just for this single property?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? It's a public hearing. Anyone on this side that would like to speak? Anyone on this side that would like to speak?
All right, move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Move that we approve the rezoning.
Second.
Got a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
The City Council finds that the above amendment is consistent with the City of Burlington comprehensive land use plan, and that this action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the amendment is compatible with existing land uses in the vicinity and reflects the changing land use patterns in the area. That's my motion.
I second.
Got a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Thank you. Number two, a public hearing has been scheduled. Consider an application to amend the conditional rezoning approved by the Burlington City Council on September 2nd, 2014, to reduce the parking requirements from five parking spaces per thousand square feet gross floor area to four parking spaces per thousand square feet gross floor area, and to allow the parking area to be nine feet from the property line along University Drive. Property is located on the east side of University Drive between South Church Street and Dunley Drive, referenced as Alamance County Identification, 106770. At this time, recognize Ms. Nelson.
Thank you. Due to required changes to the layout by NCDOT, a lower parking ratio is being requested. This type of request has been granted elsewhere in the city. The parking ratio here is becoming more common across the country, and this request is to amend a conditional rezoning approved by City Council in 2014. It has the recommendation of staff and was unanimously recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission with the use and development conditions submitted. The commission also recommended that the official zoning map and the comprehensive land use plan be amended to reflect the rezoning. The commission found that the rezoning will not adversely affect the adjoining property, is in keeping with land uses already in the area, and that is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan. Mr. Ryan Moffett is here tonight to speak on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm here this evening representing Mr. Ed Tam in his application to amend this conditional rezoning of the property between Huffman Lane and University Drive. As was noted, he would like to reduce the parking density from five spaces per 1,000 square feet of gross floor area to four, and to establish a setback of the parking area off University Drive to nine feet. The primary purpose for the addition of these conditions to the conditional zoning is for the development of the traffic plan for that development. Mr. Tam has been working closely with the Department of Transportation to put together a plan that optimizes the parking density with the traffic flow in this development. We think that moving from the five to four ratio is most efficient, and that in order to allow for the Department of Transportation's requirements in this parking plan, that this reduction in the parking ratio is appropriate. The nine-foot setback also goes to the same effect of allowing more space for the traffic flow. As was noted, this reduction in parking ratio is becoming more common, and that this is just probably the most efficient way to establish a traffic plan for the development. If you all have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Mr. Tam is also present, and he would, I'm sure, be able to answer any questions that I can't.
Questions for Mr. Moffett.
No.
The DOT requirements that we're talking about, if we make the alteration to the parking area, all the DOT requirements will be met at that point?
Yes, sir, Mr. Rother.
Any other questions for Mr. Moffett? Thank you, Mr. Moffett. Public hearing, anyone on this side would like to speak? Anyone on this side that would like to speak?
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett.
Make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
May I make a motion that we approve the rezoning request as requested?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
May I also make a motion to approve the statement of consistency, whereas the City Council finds that the above amendment is consistent with the City of Burlington's comprehensive land use plan, and that this action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the amendment is compatible with existing land uses in the vicinity and reflects the changing land use patterns in the area.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Thank you. Number three, a public hearing has been scheduled. Consider an application to amend conditional rezon approved by Burlington City Council on February 21st, 2006, reduce the parking spaces per thousand square feet gross floor area to four parking spaces per thousand square feet gross floor area. The property is located on the north side of Garden Road between the Boone Station Drive and Huffamille Road, referenced as Alamance County Tax Identification Numbers, 112794 and 112795. This time, we recognize Ms. Nelson.
Thank you. Again, this request is for a lower parking ratio, and this type of request has been granted elsewhere in the city. The parking ratio here is becoming more common across the country, as I said before. This request to amend a conditional rezoning was approved in 2006 originally, has the recommendation of staff, and was unanimously recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission with the use and development conditions submitted. The commission also recommended that the official zoning map and the comprehensive land use plan be amended to reflect the rezoning. The commission found that the rezoning will not adversely affect the adjoining property, is in keeping with land uses already in the area, and that is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan. Mr. Dan Simmons is here to speak to this request.
Welcome, Mr. Simmons.
Thank you. My name is Dan Simmons. I'm with Triangle Civil Works, a civil engineering company out of Smithfield. I'm representing the owner. As you all know, the old Office Max building is vacant, has been for quite some time. We're seeking to revitalize that section. Some of the small shops in that section is also vacant. It's in need of having some sort of anchor over there. What we're looking for is the flexibility in reaching out to other users that might want a building and space larger than what the old Office Max was. Right now, the center is at 299,405 square feet. The current parking ratio as it exists today is 4.95 per thousand. If we go any larger with that, you know, we're going to violate the city code, and we want to be in compliance with what the city code is and in compliance going forward. So, we feel like by giving us the flexibility of reaching out to other tenants that can occupy that space, or a remodeled space, or an enlarged space, will be vital to the life of the center. And as you know, that five per thousand, we created the sea of asphalt and the sea of parking, which is utilized one or two days a year. And in the other days of the year, we got a lot of pollution running off from the asphalt. So, we feel like that lower ratio, which has been accomplished in a lot of other towns, is, would be appropriate here, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
It's a public hearing. Anyone on this side that would like to speak? Anyone on this side that would like to speak?
May I make a motion that we close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
May I also make a motion to approve the rezoning request as stated?
Second.
Got a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Thank you.
May I also make a motion to approve the statement of consistency, where this council finds that the above amendment is consistent with the City of Burlington's comprehensive land use plan, and that this action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the amendment is compatible with existing land uses in the vicinity and reflects the changing land use patterns in the area.
Second.
Got a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Thank you. New business. One, City Council considers setting a date of public hearing for December 1st, 2015, to amend an application to rezon property located on the north side of Interstate 4085 and south of Linwood Drive for use of a billboard approved by council, January 2nd, 2007, referenced as Alamance County Tax Identification Number is 121503. At this time, we recognize Ms. Nelson.
Thank you. This request, which was recommended by staff and denied by the Planning and Zoning Commission on the fourth revote, is to change the size and location of an already approved billboard. Mr. Ryan Moffett is here tonight to speak on this matter.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm here representing BK Holdings LLC. That's an entity made up of Mr. Joe Rickman and Randy Carey on their application to amend the conditional rezoning for the use of a billboard on a parcel which is located immediately north of Interstate 4085 and south of Linwood Drive and Trail 2. This project was initially approved by council back in January of 2007. Mr. Rickman has not made, did not move forward on the project after the economy went sour, and it's been on hold since then. Mr. Rickman submitted the current application to amend for the sole purpose of increasing the size of the approved billboard and to adjust the positioning of the sign to the western portion of the parcel in question. The application was before the Planning and Zoning Commission at its October 26th meeting. Mr. Lawson Brown presented before the commission. It was noted that this was an approved project, that the size of the board and the positioning of the board were the only two matters in issue. It was also noted that Mr. Rickman and Mr. Carey had gone to four of the six immediately adjacent landowners to the parcel, spoken with them about the plans, the desired changes. They received no objections to their proposed changes. It was also noted the efforts that Mr. Rickman has made to address any potential concerns of neighboring landowners or people that may be affected by this sign, although he has received no complaints as of yet, including a buffer of Leland Cypress trees to the north side of that billboard. As it was a public meeting, we did receive comment from one concerned citizen. I will note that she was not a neighbor of the project, although she did express concern for the project as a licensed highway driver on the highway, voiced her displeasure with the approval of the billboard in general. At the close of those comments, it was our understanding that this particular citizen was the spouse of one of the sitting commission members. Mr. Bill Ablynapp is an alternate extraterritorial member who was seated at that meeting. He did cast a vote not in favor of recommending approval of this project. Final vote tally was four to three. And as a result of that, I don't know if his vote was affected by his wife's comments. I don't think we, anyone can know. I think if you would ask our client, he would have his doubts. To say the least, I don't know that the situation created the appearance of impartiality. I think that considering the efforts and the lengths that Mr. Rickman and Mr. Carey have gone to preserve this project and to try to get it back on its feet, and the measures they've taken to continue to pursue it, there is merit to it. I think they are entitled to be heard in an impartial setting, and to that extent, we would respectfully ask the council to please set a public hearing for, to consider approval of this project.
Questions for Mr. Moffett.
I have a question. How many additional square feet of area are you talking about?
Do you mean the size of the billboard?
Size of the billboard, yeah.
The application requests increasing the size to 14 feet by 48 feet.
And it is now.
And as I understand it, it is currently 10 by 36.
But all we're asking for tonight is just simply a public hearing date, so...
I think, consistent with our past policy, we've always offered to people an opportunity to be heard by this board, so I would move that we set it off for public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Good. Thank you, Mr. Moffett.
Thank you all very much.
That date will be December 1st.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Staff report. Ms. Nelson, you've had a lot tonight, so you're still up.
Yes, sir. I'll be as quick as I can.
Thank you.
And pretty quick. Okay. This is just a report on what first appeared here in the 247 Wall Street website. This is a site, like many others, where you go to the site, click on it, and they attract your attention through a supposed news story, and every time you click, they get money. So, that's what this is all about. If you take a look at what I've underlined here in the report, it got a little, kind of like a fish story. In the report, they look at metropolitan areas, and then they go a little further down, and they say cities. And that's where the confusion came from. When I was looking at their report, it appears that they used one variable to determine the cities that they chose, which they should have been looking at MSAs, or calling them MSAs to be more appropriate, but they used median income from the recently released 2014 American Community Survey from the Census Bureau. And that's the variable by itself that they used to claim that all these cities are poor, which is not good reporting, in my opinion. They added a few other negative variables in there, but that was just sort of an afterthought. If you look here, just to clarify what I'm talking about with MSAs, it's a little hard to see this green map, but you have metropolitan areas which are 50,000 and above for an urban population. So, that's how they're determined. If you look at the little inset map, which the arrow has gotten offset, there we are. It's called the Burlington Metropolitan Statistical Area, but that's just the title. It's like the one next door is Greensboro High Point Metropolitan Statistical Area. It's just the title. Really, it's the entire county and all the cities in the county that are being used in this report. There are also 381 metropolitan statistical areas in the U.S. and seven for Puerto Rico. Now, the folks at 247 Wall Street decided to leave Puerto Rico out of the story. If they had included it as a part of the U.S., since they are a part of the U.S., Burlington would not have been in the story at all. So, they decided to pick and choose, which is, again, not the right way to go about it. And then I described to you what an MSA is already. So, we'll look at the next page. I pulled up stats on median income by county for 2014, and the number that they've got, that I've got circled and read there from the Census Bureau, is the same number as what this study used for Burlington. So, that just clarifies that they are using the MSA rather than the city of Burlington. This is a map showing poverty by county in America, and if you look at the map, you can see there's a large swath that's the same color that we are. Very large. And that's just in the little inset. There's even more across the country. Here, I've inserted this chart. The orange diamond is Burlington, MSA, and the rest of it is the other counties in the state. And you can see that we're right in the middle with everybody else. And you can see that we're right in the middle with everybody else. So, we don't really, in my opinion, stand out so much that we are so bad that we warrant their special attention. In their previous study, by the way, they used top 10 instead of top 25. And I looked it up, the data for that year, we wouldn't have been in there anyway even if they had done the top 25. So, they just sort of play around with the variables as their needs arise. Here's the median household income by county, and you can see again, we're right in line with, unfortunately, with a lot of other counties in the state, as well as in the southeast region. In 2013, instead of 39,000, we had 43,000. So, again, the new data hadn't been released in time for me to update the slide with the mapping, but I'm trying to point out that we are, we're very similar to the other counties in this state. If you look at this map, I like this one, it's cost of living adjusted wages by the MSA. And what it's looking at is what you make and looking at the cost of things that are in your area that you would buy. And for the Burlington MSA, 2014 average hourly earnings, non-adjusted, is $20.80. Then when you adjust it for the cost of items around here, it's as if you got a raise. It's $22.06. So, we are one of these green dots. Green is good. Orange is not so good. So, you see, we're doing very well. And this is just a spreadsheet I wanted to put up and show you just very quickly because I'm going to show you some of the variables that I pulled out as a chart so you can see it a little more clearly. This is unemployment, again, MSA for 2015, when it was released, 2015. They used an amalgamation of data from 2014 into 2015 to create this. And you see Burlington, again, we're not at the bottom of the barrel with this. In this case, the lower the bar, the better off you are. One of the three cities have a lower unemployment rate when this study was done than Burlington, and one is tied with us at 4.7%. MSA job growth, our job growth is not the worst of the MSAs in our state. And then the cost of living, what you want to do is look at the 0.0% at the bottom of the chart as the U.S. cost of living overall. And so, in this case, the higher you are, the better your cost of living is. It's more affordable to live in your community. College attainment, again, we're not the lowest in the state, and I have a new Census Data table that shows we have gone up and we're 24% right now. Net migration, you're looking at the total number of people that move into your community as well as those who move out, and that gives you your net. And you can see that there are more people moving into the Burlington MSA than are moving out. And that's a really good thing. There's yet another table, this is from Forbes, and you can see, this is, I pulled out all the North Carolina MSAs out of a huge table of all the ones in the U.S. And if you look at Burlington across the board there, we are ranked in at least the top third in all four of those categories in the entire country. Here, this is from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, and as you can see, it's recent, it's the most recent they've got, September 2015. It's a year's worth of data, and they look at percent change in employment by your metropolitan area, and we are ranked number 52 in the nation in increased employment levels out of 387 MSAs. I think that is really good. And just to wrap it up, there's plenty of positives. You see all the articles here, and one that's hardest to see is talking about the growth of Alance County, and we have become the 17th fastest growing county in the state from April 1st, 2010 to July 1st, 2014. And there's many businesses that locate here because they see the potential that we have.
Questions for Ms. Nelson? Thank you, Ms. Nelson.
Thank you.
Before I forget it, we have some visitors. The Elon Local News is finishing up a documentary on the city, and it, the premier will be, or premieres, December 1st, 2015? Good, welcome. We appreciate you being here. All right, that gets us to public comment. We have one, Mr. Tony Cox. Topic is crime at Walmart and family justice, I think. Welcome.
Thank you. This morning, about 5:00, I got a dreaded call. It was my dad. He says, "I've been robbed." And I immediately got ready, and it was, he was at Walmart. It was, he had stopped there on his way to dialysis. And he told me how violent it was. There was a gun involved, threats, the person put their hands on him. And he said that Burlington Police responded immediately, and then they had to leave. There was another robbery on Martin Street. That was a family justice. We all know that when people get that violent, we got a problem. Got to stop it. Family Justice can be one of the most dangerous places in Burlington because of domestics. So, I didn't know if y'all knew about this today or not. From what I understand, people are working on it and things are moving fast. And so, we want to thank everybody for that. And I just wanted to bring to your attention because Walmart over there, there is a lot of crime. Based on information I got today, there was a letter sent from the president, they were willing to help with anything. But what really surprised me when I pulled up was the number of cars in the parking lot. They do a lot of business there in those early morning hours. They see a lot of people stop there rather than convenience stores to get snacks and so forth for their days.
Excuse me for interrupting you. What time of day was this?
5:00 this morning. And the person that was robbed about 15 minutes later at the Family Justice Center was going to work at the Family Justice Center. So, it's not a good situation for anybody. Don't know what's going on with these people that done it, but hopefully give them some help also. So, just wanted to make you guys aware.
Thank you for sharing that, Mr. Cox. I did not know anything about that, but I'm sure obviously you do. Okay, good. Thank you for sharing, Mr. Cox. That brings us to City Council comments.
I just want to thank Amy Nelson for preparing that report. That was splendid. Nice job, and it's good to hear those things because that's not the impression that was out there. It feels more accurate than that report did.
I think that presentation needs to be on the website as well. Any other comments from council?
Mayor, the only other comment I want to make is I've been talking with city staff a little bit about the timeline we're on with Link Transit to be sure that it's progressing along, and I think we have sort of a tentative, kind of a soft date of May 1st. Is that correct, give or take? Is that kind of where we're at with it?
Well, we're kind of in the June-ish, give or take.
Okay.
Whereas we don't have a set date at this point. We have, we'll be bringing to you requests for vehicle purchases soon, and our proposals coming back from our RFPs should be coming in for service provision sometime in December. We'll begin evaluating those and bringing those to you first part of next year. So, once we get all that in, we'll have a much better feel in terms of timeframe.
So, regardless, we're on target with everything that we've suggested?
We're on target, where we were, we were shooting for June, give or take, a month all along, so we're right still in that range, yeah.
So, you're still for the startup?
For the startup.
Any other comments from council? Burlington Annual Christmas Parade is this Saturday, November 21st at 10:00 a.m. City offices will be closed on November 26th and 27th and observation of Thanksgiving, and we'd like to wish all a very happy Thanksgiving. Any other comments? Not entertaining a motion to adjourn?
I move.